Pursuant to Government Code Section 54953, members of the Daily City Council and staff will participate in this meeting via a teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch this meeting via livestream, a city council meeting livestream or our local channel 27@comcast. And so officially call this meeting to order. Let's all rise up for the pledge of flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call please? Mr. Buda Ventura?
Present.
Dr. Rod?
Present.
Ms. D. Giovanni?
Present.
Mrs. Sylvester?
I'm Sylvester, present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present. Thank you very much. Thank you. Now moving on to our presentations. Number one, we have proclaiming the week of November 14th to 20th, 2021 as United Against Hate Week. This proclamation, United Against Hate Week, November 14th to 20th, 2021. Whereas the United States is a nation of immigrants whose strength comes from its diversity. And whereas the Constitution of the United States confers equality on all individuals regardless of race, gender, orientation, religion, or political beliefs. And whereas recent rhetoric has generated a toxic environment that encourages the propagation of racist, xenophobic, anti-Semitic, sexist, homophobic, Islamophobic, and other negative views by emboldened hate groups and individuals. And whereas deep divisions within our country are the result of extreme ideology, further strengthening a cycle of mistrust and suspicion fueled by fear, anxiety, and insecurity. And whereas the number of hate crimes across the United States has increased dramatically over the past couple of years. And whereas education, compassion, and cooperation are key to unlocking understanding and embracing differences between people. And whereas the city of Daly City is committed to being a welcoming, inclusive, tolerant, and safe community for all and joins other communities around the state in recognizing United Against Hate Week. Now therefore, I, Justlyn Simonalo, Mayor and members of the City Council, hereby proclaim November 14th to 20th as United Against Hate Week in the city of Daly City and encourage the Daly City community to stand together against hate and recognize that it is an important step in bridging divisions and healing communities. This proclamation is on the agenda, you know, really in solidarity with so many cities, boards, and commissions up and down the state. We are standing in solidarity and in unification with everyone. Over the course of years, we have also done a campaign. You know, Daly City stands United Against Hate. You know, we've also offered this to our community, community at large, and also to small businesses. And it was really inspiring to see that it was optional. But many community members and businesses stood in solidarity when a lot of what we've seen across the nation and a lot of hate ensued that we saw when it reared its ugly head. And so this is, we do, we will have posters for the community that would like it, whether you're a resident or a small business, for the upcoming week so that we could all unite as one. I see Councilmember Rayba de Ventura. I, please, have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to just thank you for initiating, once again, proclamations such as these. I remember back to where we were in a serious point in our country when there was a lot of attacks on the Asian American community and how you, in particular, organized that Love Not Hate event in Daly City, where we got the community together, mobilized, and was able to really highlight this issue, bring people together. We even gave them T-shirts of Love Not Hate. So I want to thank you for doing that and always keeping this at the forefront because it's a serious issue. It's something that we have to be mindful of and we have to keep raising awareness of because it's important for our community and our country. With that, I will yield to, I think I see a couple of hands in public comment. I'll yield to that, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Buda Ventura. If there are public that would like to speak on this item, Ms. Leilani Ramos.
We have two hands raised, three hands raised, Mayor, for public comment. Those wishing to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature. Those joining by phone may press star nine. When you hear a name called, you will receive a request to unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum two minutes to speak. When your two minutes have been reached, please wrap up your comments. Speakers on a compliance will be muted. Our first speaker is Steph Bolan.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Good evening. My name is Stephanie Bolan, Panay American and Concerned Community Member. I've worked and lived in Daly City for decades. And while I appreciate this proclamation, understand the significance of this historically. I just want to bring up some issues that have come up in the last few months. I shared a public comment on Monday, October 25th, regarding concerns of City Councilmember D. Giovanni's unprofessional conduct and divisive language on September 13th, City Council meeting and occasions thereafter. I, among several others who spoke and submitted letters, made some requests for a public acknowledgement of the harm inflicted upon our Filipino community at large with regard to inconclusive accusations against Filipino leaders and organizations. There's an incongruency of this proclamation and the developments that have occurred specifically around attempts to highlight the Constitution of the United States conferring equality on all individuals regardless of race, gender, orientation, religion, or political beliefs, and that the city of Daly City is committed to being welcoming, inclusive, tolerant, et cetera. City Councilmember Pam D. Giovanni's actions and language demonstrating an abuse of her political power has highlighted this very statement of uniting against hate by creating a toxic environment within the council and amongst our broader community. We've made requests for recognition of harm. We've offered solutions and have yet to hear from the council member or city council on how this will be addressed. If this proclamation is intended to address these types of inequitable and harmful activities that have transpired not only these past months, but historically in Daly City amongst BIPOC communities, then there needs to be proactive, a proactive response to what we're asking. I'm looking forward to hearing what course of action will be taken to rectify this long overdue systemic issue to work towards healing. I thank you for your time, Mayor Justlyn Simonalo, Vice Mayor Rod Dos Magwal, and City Council members for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next, we have Kristi.
Good evening, members of the City Council and other folks in attendance. I'm also a Concerned Filipina. I used to live in Daly City and I actually work in Daly City now. And in sort of listening to what Steph Bolan said, I actually also spoke at the last meeting and want to piggyback on what she said that we, as a community, because I am a community advocate, are waiting to hear from Councilmember D. Giovanni regarding the comments that were made about her conduct and the harm and the impact that this has done to our Filipina XO community in terms of the false accusations she made in implicating several leaders and organizations related to an event that happened on May 23rd, which was called Safer Together. Also, in listening to the United Against Hate proclamation, I want to say that the sentiment and message are important, given the heightened injustices happening around the country and especially being directed at communities of color. There's another thing that I wanted to mention that I was also taken aback. And this also pertains to Councilmember D. Giovanni taken aback by a community member named Cheryl having to speak out about an encounter she had with Councilmember D. Giovanni in which she had convened a meeting with a few community members. And she quote said that it is very scary to think that an elected official has racist thoughts after ongoing issues about Asian hate crimes and Black Lives Matter. In the context of this, this was, these were, you know, this was in the context of what Councilmember D. Giovanni said, according to Cheryl. And in those statements, she made generalizations about Filipino leaders as doing, quote, "illegal things." This is really unacceptable and what Cheryl experienced is unacceptable. This needs to be addressed by the City Council because in not doing so, this goes against what this United Against Hate proclamation stands for.
Kristi? Your two minutes have been reached. Thank you for your comments. And last, we have Fernando.
Hi, can folks hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, my name is Fernando and I am a longtime Daly City resident. I've been here since 2006 and I've been living here ever since. My family and I immigrated from the Philippines and I've considered it my home. I've been going here for school. I went to Junivero Serra Elementary. I went to Westmore High School. And I have been part of many countless activities and organizations that have continuously provided support and services to Daly City as a whole. And it just breaks my heart to be known that there is a public servant that we have voted in office that is speaking very, very negative and very unfounded accusations that a lot of the Filipino-American organizations here in the city are doing conflict of interest, corrupt things, like those are just simply untrue. And Castlemember D. Giovanni, speaking from one person to another, I am encouraging you to reach out to these Filipino organizations that are doing tremendous work, that are doing significant work for our community and learn from them, learn who they are, understand where they're coming from. And if you truly are a public servant of the community and a champion of being an ally of Filipino-Americans, you will learn to learn. Simply learning about our community, about what we do is, is, it will do a lot of service to us. So I just want to reach out and simply say, this should never be a president in the council. It is a dangerous rhetoric. And I am simply asking you to apologize to the Filipino-American community that you have heard. And I am one of those members, so that's all. I yield back.
Thank you for your comments. That ends public comment.
Thank you for those that provided comments this evening on the proclamation. You know, we are a community that is diverse, a community that I am so proud to be raised in, which respects one another, which really, I mean, that has been what I've been surrounded by my whole life. And so I think that's what needs to continue to happen, the respect and really amongst my colleagues. And I know that there has been people in the community that have been hurt, that have been disgusted by some of the commentary one of my colleagues have mentioned, the accusations. If we are really a community that is united, a community that is, that stands for love and not hate, that these types of behavior should not be occurring. I wasn't going to bring this up this evening, but I feel it is my duty to my community and to those who are listening. I was one of those that had been accused by Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni. And I want to set this record straight. The FPPC has said that I have had no wrongdoing and that there is no conflict of interest. A fair political organization. And I have the documentation to prove so. And so I just want that record straight. And Councilmember Pamela D. Giovanni, please stop vilifying and having those accusatory actions because I've been exonerated. And I have the proof to show it. Vice Mayor Dos Magwal.
Thank you, Mayor. I think occasions, occasions like this opens up hope and opportunities to learn. And as a person that has been teaching ethnic studies for the past two decades, that race and racism goes beyond skin color. You know, being accused by colleagues of mine to put in notes, we want deliberately to have white women to be expressed in notes. Again, my words were put out of context. And when we talk about race and racism, I want to quote, quote a professor that has been doing work on generational trauma. Her name is Dr. Joy Degru. And she's been talking about race and racism and her work on post-traumatic slave syndrome. And she said, "Racism does not always look the same. In our definition of racism, we need to include prejudice, discrimination, bias, and bigotry. These are all manifestations of the same root problem, racism." And then she goes on to say, define racism as, prejudice is equal opportunity. Everyone can be prejudiced. To be a racist, however, you need to have the power to negatively impact whole groups of people on a systemic and structural level, jobs, housing, health, education, criminal justice, et cetera. So when we talk about racism, racism is really related to power. And he's disturbing comments and the testimonies by folks in the community, that's a prime example of implicit bias, a prime example of racism. And, you know, trying to move forward, let's humanize the process and look forward to acknowledging what was said, was said wrong. And whenever there's pain, there's also room for growth and there's also room for learning. And that's what this whole thing about understanding this week of understanding, uniting against hate. Because you can't have hate unless you have love. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Dos Magwal, on those words. And I, and I think those were profound and really, it's, it's about continuous healing in our communities and our communities of, of color and communities altogether, that it's a process, as you mentioned. And we need to acknowledge the truth and be able to also move forward in, in acknowledging, you know, what has happened and also how do we move forward and really move towards healing? You know, it has also just been, you know, in the past year and a half around, it's been inspiring to see community in the year, year and a half that we've seen from our young people leading the way from Jefferson High School, leading the Black Lives Matter march that came from Jefferson High School all the way to City Hall. Seeing community members from all areas come together to support the anti-Asian hate that was happening and bridging forth solutions and ways to have safe spaces like what happened at Geller Park and other areas within the Bay Area. It's been a trying year and a half or so, but also a hopeful year because that you see people coming together across all different walks of life in solidarity. And, and I think that's what needs to happen, true solidarity, acknowledging what has transpired in the past, where we are now, and what we need to do in the future. So, thank you very much. There's any other comments from my colleagues at this time on this proclamation?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I, I just want to say, I think you didn't say enough about how these baseless accusations against you were resolved in your favor. The FPPC is the body that's in charge of investigating any allegations of conflict of interest, improper conduct. And what the FPPC has done is issued a rebuke of any sort of notion that you had in any way, any conflict of interest as made by this council member. So when she says things to the public like Filipinos are corrupt or are, or are, whatever words that were used to, to, in that meeting. And when she makes these baseless allegations at a council meeting of a conflict of interest, where there is a formal complaint filed with the FPPC, where that FPPC actually investigated, fully investigated, and determined that there was absolutely no conflict, no improper conduct, that is something that I don't think we should just gloss over. I mean, what has happened is a baseless allegation was determined to actually be baseless. And that's what I think the public needs to know and understand what happened. And so I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, if I felt a need to elaborate, but that's what the public should know and be clear about. And I also applaud the members of the public who have the courage to speak out when racism is evident to them, when they feel that they can't sit silent and not say anything, when they actually feel empowered to say something because it goes to their deepest roots of unfairness and injustice. And so thank you for the members of the public who have the courage to speak out. Thank you for letting us know what your thoughts are. And, and thank you for uniting, helping us unite against hate. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Buda Ventura. I, I see no other hands raised for this item. Seeing no other hands raised for this item, I will now move on. And I want to say, once again, thank you for everyone that joined us on this item. We will now move on to item number two. Proclaiming November 2021 as National American Indian Heritage Month. Proclamation on National American Indian Heritage Month, November 2021. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples. And whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today. And whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States. And whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month. And whereas in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities have been planned. Now therefore, I, Justlyn Simonalo, Mayor and members of the City Council, hereby proclaim November 2021 as National American Indian Heritage Month in the city of Daly City and encourage the Daly City community to acknowledge the important contributions of native peoples and celebrate this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. This evening, we have the honor of having Sandra Moore from the American Indian Committee Chair, the San Andres Lake Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution DAR. accepting the proclamation.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. It's just an honor to be here. Again, my name is Sandra Moore and I actually do have Native American heritage and I'm very proud of my heritage. My heritage is Cherokee. I'm not claiming to be a member of a tribe, I'm not, but my ancestry is there, my DNA proves it. And it is just my pleasure to be able to share the American Indian perspective on their life, their culture, their traditions. There, we have the Aloni here in this area. We have, I've actually been to Apalo in this area where I got to meet some fellow Cherokees. And it's just amazing, even in my life, how certain food, even idioms from my Cherokee culture came down through the generations to me. It sounds so much cheer. I'm also a chaplain. And it also sounds like there needs to be a lot of healing for all of you. And so you just know, you have my prayers, that great healing will come. I'm multiracial. I may not appear it, but I'm just like a total kinds, 57 variety here. I have Chinese, Indian, Native American, African. I'm just like everything. And I think that diversity is just so special. American Indians will test, will testify very, very much how much they have faced discrimination, how much they have faced so much hatred that is completely unwarranted and what they've had to do to fight back. And it's a shame we have this kind of thing in our country. But my prayer continually is that we will recognize the value of every human life and every nationality and background. Again, it's my privilege to present the perspective from the American Indian point of view and even our history, which is totally different point of view from their perspective. But it's all valuable and different points of view, different perspectives, different races, different values, they're all something of great value to understand and know. And we need that. And so we're appreciative of all of you here for what you're contributing to our society and our country. And I just want to thank you again for allowing me to come to your meeting and to read the proclamation, which means so much to me. What I love about the Daughters of the American Revolution is that it's a chance for me to give back to my ancestor who actually fought in the Revolutionary War. And amazingly, American Indians also can be a part of DAR, as can Africans, because both fought in, very bravely, in the American Revolution, actually at the Battle Bunker Hill, in Native American spots. And also World War I and II, we've heard about the Navajo code talkers. Very, very marvelous what they did for us in war-torn Pacific area of World War II. But most don't know about the Choctaw code talkers, who helped us win World War I. So there's just been amazing things that people have done over the years. And every heritage has contributed to this amazing country. And I hope and pray we continue to have the freedom to, to see different perspectives and to understand the value of our others' human life. So again, thank you so much for letting me come. Again, my prayers are with your, your city for healing and amongst all of you. And my, you know, my best wishes are to you all. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to share.
Thank you so much, Ms. Moore, for taking the time out today. We know the valuable contributions of the native peoples and we, we sit on their land. And so we, we honor the indigenous peoples of this nation. And it's a small token of our proclamation to honor the indigenous peoples of, of this country. And so, thank you so much for being here. I have Dr. Dos Magwal, Vice Mayor, who has had hands raised.
I want to say congratulations again, Sandy, Sandra, on, I think one of the topics that are underrepresented in our curriculum is the experiences of Native Americans, indigenous peoples here. And I want to recognize the Rama Tishna Aloni land that I reside on, Daly City resides on. And, and one of the misconceptions is that, you know, prior to colonialists arriving in this country, that this land was totally blank. Or, you know, just deep in forest. But what people don't understand is that the civilization that they were, that was created was definitely used as a structure for European colonialists to thrive on. There were the existence of roads, the existence of trails, existence of aqueducts. So the whole thing about civilization, that civilization didn't come, civilization was already here. So thank you again for your presence. And I'm, I'm so honored to have this proclamation given through our City Council.
Thank you. Thank you so much. It's an honor to be here.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Oops, it's muted.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Giovanni. I see Ms. Oppona, did you want to say something? Okay, no. So are any other of my colleagues? Seeing none at this time, and I think, I think Ms. Moore is, has already left. So we, thank you so much. We will now move on to item number three. Item number three is our regular meeting of October 25, 2021. And it's we have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of October 25, 2021. I'll motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much. Now moving on to our consent. With our consent agenda, I will be pulling item number six. And that's the item I'll be pulling this evening. Are there any other items for my colleagues?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item four and five, please. Thank you.
Thank you. With the exception of item four, five, and six, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Do I have a first and a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much. Item number four, accepting fiscal year 2021 annual report on collection and use of developer public facility fees.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Dr. Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Item number four is the fiscal year 2021 annual report on the collection and use of developer public facility fees. AB 1600 Developer Public Facility Fees are revenues derived from developer fees that are restricted to infrastructure expenditures for expansion and enhancements necessitated by new development. The use of the fees is established in the city's capital budget during each budget period. These fees provide a portion of funding for various eligible projects in priorities established by the adopted budgets. State law requires the city to segregate its public facility fee revenue and not co-mingle it with other city funds. To meet this requirement, the city has established a separate public facilities fees fund specifically for tracking the collection and use of public facility fees and to allocate interest earned. The law also requires this annual report be brought before the governing body for approval. The staff recommends the City Council approve the annual report on the collection and use of developer public facility fees for fiscal year 2021. And staff is available to answer any additional information desired by the mayor or council members. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Nevin, for that. Are there any questions, Councilmember D. Giovanni? Do you have any questions on item?
Yeah, just thank you. Thank you, Mr. Nevin. I just wanted to make sure that the public knows that. So these items that are listed on here are like, are different facilities. Can this be expanded at some point? Or is it just, this is it, on what we are allowed to get the fees for?
This is the, the current list, nine bulleted points, I think, that you're referring to in the staff report are the, the items that the developer fees may be used on.
Okay, thank you. But, but at some point, if we want to expand or what have you, right?
I believe we'd have to change what the fees could be used for if it's not already state law that, that requires.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Mr. Nevin. I appreciate, so that the public knows. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Seeing no other hands raised at this time. I move to approve fiscal year 2021 annual report on collection and use of developer public facility fees.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, thank you very much. Now moving on to item number five. Authorizing Submittal of One Bay Area Grant to Application to Metropolitan Transportation Commission for the South Gate Avenue and School Street Safety Improvement Project. Director Chu?
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. This item is the authorization to submit a One Bay Area Grant to Application to the Metropolitan Transportation Commission for the South Gate Avenue and School Street Safety Improvement Project. Earlier this year in February, the City-County Association of Governments of Sematillo County requested applications for the Safe and Seamless Mobility Quick Track Program. Projects that are eligible include quick build, bike, pedestrian, and transit access improvements, and local safe and seamless mobility projects. The public work staff, we identified a pedestrian improvement project for the grant request. And we prepared an application for the South Gate Avenue and School Street Safety Improvement Project. This project is located in a priority development area and community of concern as defined by the Metropolitan Transportation Commission. The project would install edge lines, painted bobouts, and high-visibility crosswalks to increase pedestrian visibility along two corridors, which were identified in the city's high-injury network, developed under the city's Vision Zero Action Plan. Also, the design elements would be consistent with the policies established in our pedestrian and bicycle master plan. The total estimated cost of the project is approximately $569,000. The grant application is requesting $450,000 and the remaining $119,000 would be the city's local match. The CTA Board of Directors already approved Daly City's project for the O'Bag II funding at their October 14, 2021 meeting. And they are recommending that the project go to the MTC for their approval in December of 2021. At this time, no appropriation is needed. Should the city be successful in securing the grant funds, we will return to the City Council to appropriate the grant funds and then also request the $119,000 local match. The local match typically would be allocated from transportation-related funding sources such as Measure A or Measure W. So in conclusion, staff is recommending that the City Council authorize staff to submit the O'Bag II grant application for the South Gate Avenue and School Street Safety Improvement Project, like to MTC. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the City Council.
Thank you, Director Chu, for that presentation. Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chu. It's always great to hear. I wanted the public to know about our grants because that is a lot to be proud of, especially during this time. And that when it comes to school safety, especially, well, you guys have been really great about focusing on in and around our Jefferson Elementary Schools. Every school, you can think of Bay Shore, and looking for grants to try to make that safety improvement because, you know, that was overdue for a long time. And I really appreciate it. So thank you and your staff for that. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much, Director Chu. I don't see any other hands up from my colleagues. So I move to approve item number five. Authorizing Submittal of One Bay Area Grant to Application to the Metropolitan Transportation Commission for the South Gate Avenue and School Street Safety Improvements Project, which is very important to make, ensure that we have walkable streets for our youth. So do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much. Now moving on to item number six. Improving Application for the California Department of Parks and Recreation Specified Grant and Authorized the City Manager to Execute All Grant Documents for Margate Park Improvements Project. I wanted to pull this item to say thank you to our Assembly Member Phil Ting for the support of $4 million and also to the staff, Ms. Shana Maltby, Lani Ramos, and everyone, Director Chu, on working on this item. You know, improving our parks is something so important in our community. Have we seen that ever more so in the pandemic? And having space, public open spaces that are accessible to our community is huge. And so what is being proposed right now is having a skate park. And we know many of our young people are really looking for a place to skate. And, and so that's something coming down the pipeline. But also one thing that I've mentioned to Ms. Maltby is seeing if there is any way to provide maybe an all-accessible, whether it's a totlot or play area within, within that space. And I know she's going to be looking to see if there's feasibility. There is a park called the Magical Bridge Playground, but really it's all abilities. It's an all-ability inclusive playground and really provides, you know, children with autism a space and place. And as mentioned, all abilities. And so that's something, if we are able to do so, I know, will be really helpful in our community. And just grateful that we, we got the $4 million from the state and also the, the money that we received. That the money that we received from the generous donation. Of, was it a million dollars, Ms. Maltby, that we'll be using as well?
From the Buddhists?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct, a million dollars they donated, yep.
Beautiful, thank you, so that's about five million dollars to renovate Margate Park. So looking forward to see how it all turns out, thank you to the staff and thank you to. Our Assembly Member Phil Ting. And so with that, I motion to approve the application for the California Department of Parks and Recreation. Oh, is there, wait, before I go, is there any comments?
Yes, Madam Mayor. If I may, I want to piggyback in thanking Assembly Member Phil Ting. For his support as, as Chair of the Budget Committee. He really obviously controls the, the money and the purse. And, and, and is able to get us the funding. Assembly Member Ting has never forgotten Daily City. And I think it's in part because of the relationship that you have built with him, that we have built with him, that. And so he's always, you know, updated on Daily City, always, he always asks about Daily City and what we need. What projects he needs our help on and so. With, with, with that continuing relationship, a relationship. That you've continued to develop and foster and, 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 and his, really his outreach has been incredible, so I want to. Give a special thanks to Assembly Member Phil Ting and his staff. I know that a skate park is something that. You know, our community was concerned about and. You know, it was, it was used and the other one, other one that we had was very dilapidated and had to close down, so I. Thank the staff for, for also helping in, in making sure this is something we can continue to provide a service to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bonaventura. And see no other hands raised at this time. And so I move to approve the application for the California Department of Parks and Recreation. Specified grant and authorize city manager to execute all grant documents for Margate Park Improvements Project. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, have a second, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye, thank you very much. Now moving on to item number eleven. Item number eleven, public hearing for the proposed ordinance adding. Chapter eight point eight zero mandatory organic waste disposal reduction ordinance and we have Ms. La Lani Ramos.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. Tonight I will be providing a high level overview of Senate Bill thirteen eighty three. Its goals and requirements and Daily City's plans to meet compliance with these unfunded state mandates. Organic waste like food scraps, yard trimmings, paper and cardboard make up half of what Californians dump in landfills. Californians dispose of approximately twenty three million tons of organic waste in twenty fourteen. And approximately twenty seven million tons in twenty seventeen. Methane comes from the anaerobic breakdown of organic waste. And our landfills are responsible for emitting over twenty percent of the state's methane emission annually. Making it the state's third largest source of methane, which contributes to health conditions like asthma. California is experiencing the effects of climate change with longer droughts and warmer temperatures drying our forests. Contributing to the number of wildfires and negatively impacting air quality. Bigger storms and coastal erosion due to rising sea levels. Reducing climate super pollutants like methane from organic waste and landfills will have a significant impact on the climate crisis. SB thirteen eighty three signed into law September twenty sixteen by Governor Brown. Was designed to reduce greenhouse gas emissions like methane by setting organic waste disposal reduction targets for California. The targets must reduce organic waste disposal seventy five percent below twenty fourteen levels. As well as rescue at least twenty percent of currently disposed edible food to feed those in need, all by twenty twenty five. In November twenty twenty, CalRecycle published regulations that detail how the state plans to meet these ambitious targets. Giving jurisdictions only thirteen months to establish new programs and policies that will meet these significant regulatory changes. By January one, twenty twenty two, local jurisdictions are required to implement a suite of programs. And adopt an ordinance to comply with specific requirements to achieve SB thirteen eighty three statewide mandates. State enforcement of this law on local jurisdictions also begins in twenty twenty two. Juristic- jurisdictions are then given two years until twenty twenty four before they are required to begin enforcing these requirements on non-compliant entities. By twenty twenty five, the state must achieve seventy five percent organic waste reduction and twenty percent food recovery targets. SB thirteen eighty three is a significant piece of legislation that leans heavily on local jurisdictions for implementation. Staff has outlined the following action plan to ensure compliance. Adopt an ordinance for collection, recycling and food recovery requirements. Enter into an MOU with the County of San Mateo for the establishment of an edible food recovery program. Establish a recovered organic waste product and recycled content paper procurement policy. Update franchise agreement with Republic Services to reflect SB thirteen eighty three collection requirements. Plan for rate increases to support new collection and recycling requirements and determine future staff and funding needs to implement the law. There are six key program areas that SB thirteen eighty three imposes on local jurisdictions by January one, twenty twenty two. Mandatory organics collection, edible food recovery, education and outreach, procurement of recycled organic products. Capacity planning and enforcement, record keeping and reporting. It is important to note that a lot of these program areas have overlap. And they are not equal in amount of time, effort and money that will be required to implement and manage. Each program area will have unique challenges that the city will require collaboration and coordination with our partners throughout the county. All local jurisdictions must provide organic waste collection services to all residents and businesses. Additionally, waste containers used for both curbside programs and indoor waste collection stations. Must follow a universal color scheme of gray or black for trash, green for organic waste and blue for traditional recyclables. These containers are also subject to labeling and contamination monitoring requirements. Currently, the city's franchise agreement with Republic Services provides all Daily City residents free organics collection service alongside their garbage and recycling. Residential, residential carts match SB thirteen eighty three's universal color scheme. The franchise agreement provides Daily City businesses the option to subscribe to organics collection services. However, the franchise agreement will need to be updated to now mandate these services. SB thirteen eighty three allows the city to grant waivers to commercial businesses and multifamily residential dwellings. If they generate less than the defined thresholds or lack adequate space for the collection containers. Commercial metal bins currently do not match SB thirteen eighty three's universal color scheme. Trash bins are blue, organic waste bins are brown and traditional recyclable bins are green. While the existing color scheme may be grandfathered in, all new bins will need to follow SB thirteen eighty three's universal color scheme. Republic Services anticipates future costs associated with this transition. Republic Services in partnership with the city will be working with commercial businesses and multifamily residential dwellings. To subscribe to curbside organics collection service and assess eligibility for a waiver. As well as educate both residents and businesses about the new mandates, including contamination requirements. Jurisdictions are required to establish an edible food recovery program for large surplus food generators to recover as much edible food for human consumption as possible. Implementation of this program is split into two tiers with tier one generators having to comply in twenty twenty two. And tier two generators having to comply in twenty twenty four. The city is partnering with the County of San Mateo offices sustainability to implement a countywide food recovery program. After conducting an initial analysis of the food recovery programs and capacity in San Mateo County. The county determined one countywide program would be more effective than twenty independent programs. Staff agrees that this approach not only provides economy of scale. But also increases the likelihood that the maximum amount of edible food will be recovered. Under the proposed edible food recovery program MOU, the county would operate and enforce the edible food recovery program on behalf of the city. Which would go into effect January first, twenty twenty two. Jurisdictions must conduct education and outreach to all businesses and residents on all SB thirteen eighty three programs and requirements. The city's franchise agreement with Republic Services includes annual education and outreach campaign. That requires quarterly mailers to residents, an annual newsletter for businesses. On-site audits and technical assistance for businesses and community meetings and workshops on current service offerings. Republic Services education and outreach includes information on the latest developments in the solid waste and recycling industry. Such as legislation like SB thirteen eighty three. While the franchise agreement will need to be amended in the coming months to reflect the education and outreach requirements specified in SB thirteen eighty three. The program structure is already in place and will only need slight modifications to ensure compliance. It is important to note that education and outreach on SB thirteen eighty three has already begun. With SB thirteen eighty three information being included in recent virtual workshops and the fall newsletter. A city webpage dedicated to SB thirteen eighty three is also currently under development. Yard trimmings, food scraps and other types of organic waste can be recycled into new products like compost, mulch, biofuel. And electricity from biomass conversion. Beginning January one, twenty twenty two, SB thirteen eighty three requires cities and counties to procure annually a quantity of recovered organic waste products. CalRecycle will assign an annual procurement target to each jurisdiction based on its population. Daily City's annual procurement target for twenty twenty two is approximately eight thousand three hundred ninety two tons of organic waste. Which is equivalent to eight thousand three hundred ninety two tons of mulch or four thousand eight hundred sixty seven tons of compost. Fortunately, the city has the flexibility to choose what mix of recovered organic waste products to procure. And may choose to either use or donate these products to meet the procurement target depending on local needs. Additionally, paper purchases much, must contain thirty percent post-consumer recycled content and be recyclable. It is important to note that developing a program that both meets the city's recovered organic waste product annual procurement target. And uses the material properly will be challenging. While the city could enter into a purchasing agreement with Republic Services to procure the required tons of compost starting in twenty twenty two. The city's target amount far exceeds that which is used and needed by the city. Staff is exploring partnership opportunities to see how the city can meet its procurement target in an environmentally and fiscally sustainable way. Jurisdictions are required to evaluate their readiness and capacity to implement SB thirteen eighty three. Including organics collection and recycling and edible food recovery capacity. The city's franchise agreement with Republic Services includes the assurance that the city's diverted organic material will be delivered to a fully permitted organic waste processing facility. Capacity planning for food recovery will happen at the county level as part of the county's edible food recovery program. Jurisdictions must adopt an ordinance consistent with SB thirteen eighty three requirements by January one, twenty twenty two. Additionally, jurisdictions must include other enforceable requirements to comply with CalGreen and water efficient landscape requirements. However, the city already has these requirements under separate ordinances. While jurisdictions must have an ordinance in place by January one, twenty twenty two, enforcement is not required until January one, twenty twenty four. This provides jurisdictions two years to educate waste generators on the new mandates and bring them into compliance before citations must be issued. This will also provide two years to determine how to best address compliance. As of January one, twenty twenty four, local jurisdictions must conduct inspections to monitor for compliance and conduct enforcement. Inspection requirements include annual inspections of both commercial and residential truck routes to monitor contamination. Annual compliance reviews of all commercial businesses with two cubic yards or more of organic waste to ensure they are subscribed to organics collection service. And inspections of tier one commercial edible food generators and food recovery organizations which would be performed by the county. Staff is exploring a more robust inspection and enforcement program with Republic Services to meet compliance. And any new programs will, will require an amendment to the franchise agreement. Every element of SB thirteen eighty three requires some level of record keeping. Jurisdictions are required to maintain accurate and timely records of SB thirteen eighty three compliance and reporting. Each jurisdiction is required to report to CalRecycle annually on its implementation and compliance with the requirements of SB thirteen eighty three. Staff is working with Republic Services on pursuing a joint reporting system that will help the city comply with SB thirteen eighty three's detailed recording, record keeping requirements. SB thirteen eighty three is an unfunded state law that will require significant financial commitments from all jurisdictions throughout California. While CalRecycle is exploring funding opportunities through competitive grant programs for establishing the infrastructure for recycling organic waste and recovering edible food. Costs associated with the programmatic activities such as enforcement, inspections, education and collection service will be the city's responsibility. The city will need to plan for budgetary and staffing changes to address these requirements. Including rate increases to support new collection and recycling requirements, expanded. Inspections and compliance reviews, joint reporting system, additional staffing and annual procurement costs to recover organic waste. The city's franchise agreement with Republic Services already includes a monthly administrative payment that will continue to help offset the cost of overseeing and implementing solid waste related programs. Including those required by SB thirteen eighty three, but additional funding will be necessary to reach full compliance with SB thirteen eighty three. Staff recommends that the City Council add chapter eight point eight oh to the Daily City Municipal Code regarding mandatory organic waste disposal reduction. Approve the memorandum of understanding with County San Mateo for an edible food recovery program. And approve the recovered organic waste product and recycled content paper procurement policy. Staff is available to provide any additional information desired by the council.
Thank you, Ms. La Lani Ramos for that presentation. At this point, I'd like to ask my colleagues if they have any questions particular to this item. Are there, uh, council members?
Uh, thank you so much, a couple of questions, I do understand that this bill is coming into place and we're looking for approval. First of all, thank you so much for the presentation. It was mentioned a possible rate increase. Do we have any idea what their rate increase would be above? The contract that we already have with Republic Services?
So costs for implementation of the program is unknown at this time. However, in conversations with Republic Services, the level of requirements needed to meet compliance. There is an anticipation of potential rate increase in the future, when and how much we are uncertain at this point.
Okay, thank you, and my second question is even though this deals with recyclable waste. Does this proposition also cover? The dumping of debris and furniture, do we have any plans for that?
No, this legislation is specific to organic waste.
Organic waste, okay, thank you very much, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. Any other questions from my colleagues? Seeing no hands raised at this time, I will now. Open a public hearing.
For those members of the public who wish to comment on item number eleven, please click the raise hand feature to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. When you hear a name called, you will receive a request to unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak. When your two minutes have been reached, please wrap up your comments, speakers on a compliance will be muted. We have no hands raised here.
Thank you, Ms. Ramos on that, a motion to close public hearing.
So move.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much. So at this point, are there any other comments from my colleagues in regards to this? Seeing no hands raised. Madam City Attorney can read by title only.
I may have a motion.
The motion, move to have the city attorney read by title only, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, this is an ordinance of the City of Daily City adding chapter eight point eight zero of the Daily City Municipal Code. Regarding mandatory organic waste disposal reduction.
Thank you so much. Ms. Zimmerman, Councilmember to introduce the ordinance, I'm happy. I'm happy to introduce the ordinance. I will say a story of when I was a non-council. But many moons ago, when I was in my early twenties, I was wondering why we did not have organic bins for waste. I called the City of Daly City, had a robust conversation with someone from the city manager's office on my lunch break during my nonprofit. Like, and I had a really long conversation. I still trying to remember who it was. But, you know, it's always been, you know, also like a passion of mine to figure out how we can continue to reuse, recycle, and ensure that we were up to par. I think at that time, other municipalities had those kind of organic bins or whatnot, and so food waste, et cetera. And so it's great to see that, you know, we'll be complying and also taking the next steps in this regard.
Madam Mayor, it says on your roll call, is that necessary, or was it, all in favor was okay?
Madam Mayor. I think for the resolution, I mean, I was still in the, I was still motioning for the.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm happy to introduce the ordinance. And so maybe have roll call, please.
Is this to adopt the resolution?
Yes.
So can we have a motion, please?
Oh, motion to adopt the resolution in regards to mandatory organic waste disposal reduction ordinance.
So move, Glenn Sylvester.
Okay.
Mr. Boyd Ventura.
Aye.
Dr. Rod.
Aye.
Ms. D. Giovanni.
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item number twelve, amendments to the Daily City Municipal Code, chapter seventeen point three six, home occupation zoning ordinance to allow micro enterprise home kitchen operations, MECOs, zone change ZZ nine dash two one dash one five two four zero.
As Madam Mayor, members of the city council, this is a zoning change, text amendment to the zoning ordinance to essentially allow micro enterprise home kitchen operations in Daly City. Let me get my staff report started, or the presentation started, rather. This item went to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission recommended approval. The Small Business Commission also took a look at this and gave its nod to the proposed changes to our home occupation regulations. Essentially, for those of you who are not aware, a MECO is a food facility that is operated by a resident from their private home kitchen. Once permitted, a resident can store, handle, prepare, and serve food to the public as allowed by state law, just like a restaurant would. A state law places limits on the number of meals that can be served, the revenue that can be received, and on some foods that can be prepared, among other requirements. So as indicated in the staff report, there were a couple of bills adopted by the State Assembly that allowed this to... Can everybody see my screen, by the way?
No, Michael, we see your file explorer.
Oh, okay, sorry. Say that again, sorry. Thanks. Let me bring the presentation up. I'm sorry about that. Let's try this again. So you can't see the presentation now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry, okay. Let me start over with the definition, or not. Essentially, a MECO is a restaurant facility that's allowed to operate inside someone's home. Essentially, there's limits on the amount of revenue that can be received, foods that can be prepared, among other requirements. The county essentially issues the health permits for such facilities. All that's necessary by the City of Daly City is to allow it somewhere inside the city's municipal code, and so that's what we're bringing forward to the city council tonight. The two assembly bills on the screen are the, just the the bills that, the state enabling legislation that allowed MECOs to exist in cities in California, AB six twenty-six and AB three thirty-seven. Again, permits for these facilities are issued by SMTO County, and in the case of Daly City, that's SMTO County, Environmental Health Services Division would issue the permits for this. So residents who wanted to conduct this business would actually not come to the City of Daly City. They would go to the county, they probably get a business license here, but for health permitting purposes, they would go to the county. Bills require that each jurisdiction first authorize these types of operations, and that's, again, what we're doing tonight. We're amending the zoning ordinance to essentially allow them. We're proposing that the home occupation regulations in the zoning ordinance be changed, and more specifically, that the definition section of the home occupation ordinance exclude MECOs. So that's the way that we're allowing them, by changing the definition of what a home occupation is to exclude these micro kitchen home occupations. According to the SMTO County Environmental Health Services Division, a MECO is limited to the following. This is what defines a MECO. The MECO operator must be a resident of the home, who must pass an accredited food safety exam. No more than one full-time equivalent food employee, not including family or household, members can work at the MECO. Food must be prepared, cooked, served, picked up, and/or delivered on the same day. No leftover food can be used as part of the preparation for next-day service or sold on subsequent days. No more than thirty individual or approximate equivalent meals per day, and no more than sixty individual or approximate equivalent meals per week. So there's a limitation that kind of regulates the size of the extent of the MECO operation. There are some other limitations. There's no more than fifty thousand dollars in verifiable gross annual sales that are allowed associated with each MECO. Food must be sold directly to consumers for consumption on the premises, pickup or delivery, and not provided to a wholesale or other retail food operation. So these aren't like a staging for restaurants elsewhere. They're just to be, the food to be consumed, purchased from the MECO operator, and the consumer, the person who purchased it enjoys the meal. So really, the limit of what a MECO is. There are specific prohibitions placed on each MECO, including smoking foods and using food additives such as as a method of preservation and serving raw oysters. These things wouldn't be allowed. A MECO is furthermore prohibited from posting any type of signage or other outdoor advertising displays and must comply with local noise ordinances. Just for the council's information, if you didn't already know, we prohibit any significant noise past ten PM throughout Daly City. So for us to, again, to authorize MECOs, there needs to be either a city council resolution or some change to the city's zoning ordinance, and so we decided to do the latter, and we changed the definition of home occupation. We're proposing to change the definition of home occupation so that it excludes the micro enterprise home kitchen operation. And so therefore, we put any micro enterprise home kitchen operation as defined in the California Government Code shall not be considered a home occupation for the purpose of this section. Such use shall instead be permitted to operate, subject to state and county laws and guidelines. So those are the only two sentences we'd be adding to the zoning ordinance, and we'd be authorizing MECOs by doing so. The proposal is exempt from CEQA. As it indicated, the Planning Commission did review this and is recommending the city council adopt the modifications to the zoning ordinance. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Thank you so much for that presentation, Mr. Ivan Lookhusin, and we have, I think, hand raised, right, Councilmember Sylvester.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Lockhausen, in part of your slide, you said that the food must be eaten on premises. So if I were to go over to a person, a MECO, who has a license and go pick up some food, I have to stay there on the premises at their home and eat it?
Let me read that, let's see.
Yeah.
Because there's also another type of license the county issues called cottage food, where you can, I believe, make meals to go.
It's on your list. It just says it right there, right?
Food must be prepared, cooked, served, picked up, done, or delivered on the same day, no leftover food.
I think it was further down.
So directed at the consumption on.
Prohibitions. For consumption on premises, pickup or delivery. Okay, so I would assume that they pick it up and they go, they go and do what they want. Okay, I didn't want that prohibition in there, because it seems like, well, what's the use? My next question is, would this assist, like, say, if you have a community gathering, and if you're already a MECO, you would, you know, in the place of, say, food trucks, and they have a community gathering where folks from the home bring their selectibles? Would having a MECO really help them in that regard?
You mean, would it help a food truck operation?
No, like, say, for instance, there's a carnival or something, say, a get-together, and they all gather in a certain place, they got a permit. I'm gonna just throw something off. Say, March Bank Park to have a celebration of an event or something, and someone is already a MECO. Could he or she participate without having to give a, say, health license for food?
Well, the MECO is specifically limited to operating out of a home.
Right.
I don't know how it would really relate.
Okay.
It's essentially food to order, though, as well. So you can't prepare a bunch of food and then
Bring it.
Bring it to the location and sell it. So, yeah, you're either coming to the home to pick it up, or you're having it delivered by the person who prepares them.
Okay, good. I would like to make mention that I'm very impressed. This has been a long time coming, and I hate to say it, but I think the pandemic has brought out these unique ideas and looking good. So thank you for putting forth the information. Thank you.
Councilmember Digi Bunny.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say too, well, thank you, Michael, for the presentation, and this is really going to help a lot of people that lost their jobs and, you know, have switched. I noticed I've switched, you know, into this or needed extra income, and I think that this is a great thing. They just, so they actually get a regular business license through our city, correct? And then the same thing as a home business?
They would not be required to obtain a home occupation permit.
Okay.
Yeah, we're excluding them. That's the way we're allowing them. It's kind of.
Okay, yeah, because you don't want to make it too guarded for them or whatever.
I do believe they need a city business.
They will need to get a business license, and they will need to get the county license.
And the county health.
This is regulating the food safety and food handling aspect of it, and then they will get a business license. But we had to exclude them from home occupations, because home occupations have quite a bit of restrictions, including having customers come to the house and having an employee work at the home. And so rather than unraveling all those restrictions as to how they might apply to other businesses, we created this exception.
Oh, okay. Thank you. That's very clear. Thank you, Tatum. Appreciate that. So, yeah, I get it, but they need a business license through our city and that. But it's a great opportunity for many people, and it's a jump-off point, and things are changing, and we're just evolving with them, and I appreciate that. We're moving forward and hope this is a great opportunity to many of you that are thinking about this, and you know, there's a way to make some, at least some kind of living for your family. So thank you very much, Michael, and thank you, Tatum.
Thank you.
I think, thank you to the county and everyone as well. Thank you. Good idea.
Are there any other questions, or is that your hand still raised? Okay, Vice Mayor Dalserup Magwell.
Thank you, Mayor. Michael, what is considered hours of operations for these MECOs operations?
There really are any. They just can't make any noise past ten PM. That's my local ordinance.
I was looking through, like, the questions. Is there anything, like, if somebody wanted to create a micro brewery out of their kitchen? Because I didn't see anything on alcohol. Can they?
There was something.
I saw things on cannabis, but maybe I'm just overlooking.
You know, the answer may lie in the attachments that we set with the staff report. I thought there was something about not producing alcohol, but I may be wrong about that. It's not in the presentation.
Thank you for the presentation, and I think it is looking forward to seeing he's in our community.
Yeah. You're welcome.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, for those questions. And at this point, I will open public hearing.
For those members of the public who wish to comment on item number twelve, please click the raise hand feature to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. No hands are raised, Mayor.
We will now close public hearing. And now, maybe we have a motion for the city attorney to read by title only.
So move.
Okay, I have a first.
Second.
And I have a second. Please read by title only, city attorney.
I have a question, one of order, before we move forward.
Councilmember Sylvester.
Thank you so much. I don't see a prohibition. Vice Mayor brought up a good point. If we don't have a provision for alcohol, is it permitted?
I believe serving alcohol, if you have the proper permit from the county, would be.
Well, actually, the questionnaire, in terms of serving alcohol, you do have to contact alcoholic beverage control and the manufacturing, I imagine, would be regulated by ABCs.
Yeah.
I don't know if the county will allow it or not. We would have to rely on their regulations, because it's actually, the city will enforce, like, the after-hours issues or whether they have a business license, but the actual operation of a MECO will be enforced by the county. So I imagine that there's some state licensure that would be required for alcohol manufacturing.
Thank you.
Okay, now, can we continue with, I think it was a city attorney reading the title only?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is an ordinance of the city council of the City of Daly City amending chapter seventeen point three six of Title seventeen of the Daily City Municipal Code regarding home occupation.
Thank you, Ms. Zimmerman. And I move to amend the Daily City Municipal Code, chapter seventeen point three six, home occupation zoning ordinance to allow micro enterprise home kitchen operation zone change ZZ nine dash twenty-one dash one five two four zero. Do I have a second?
Second. No need for a movement. We just need an introduction.
Okay, happy to introduce. I just want to say thank you to the team who did this, from the planning staff to Ms. Maltby. When I requested to put this on the agenda, she worked on it right away with our older staff. We saw very much so how this is needed and how the pandemic really brought forth another opportunity for people to survive in their culinary arts. And so I just want to say that hopefully this helps folks in our communities, and maybe from there also have some emerging small businesses to be able to grow within our communities. So thank you very much. Moving on to item number thirteen on communications. Status update for the hotel site, request for developer qualifications. Status update for the hotel site, request for the developer qualifications and proposals. And uh, we have Ms. Mothershead and Mr. Hira from Cosmont.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Um, as you recall, uh, the city released an R F Q, R F P. In July uh to solicit um hotel development firms uh to make a proposal. For a hotel site at eighteen fifty uh, Huniparara. The um, response period closed in August twenty-seventh, but that was then extended to October fifteenth. And the council received an update um before that October fifteenth expiration. Um, obviously, October fifteenth has passed, so we have Ken Hira from Cosmont with us this evening to give us a rundown on the. Finals and and what the next steps will be. So I'll turn it over to Ken.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, member of the, members of the council. Uh, it's a pleasure to see you again. I am having some internet problems, so in case it happens, I'll jump to my phone. But in the meantime. Uh, we were with you on September twenty-seventh. We had provided a memorandum. Uh, updating as to the status of the hotel. Uh, site, request for developer qualifications and proposals as a status update. Uh, their memo has been updated and revised to reflect the current facts, which is uh based on the October fifteenth deadline. And also, just so you know, my colleague Joe Diaz is on with me as well in case there's any specific questions. Going through in summary of this memorandum dated October twenty-second. Um, a- as uh, Smothers had mentioned, there was a. Uh, to October fifteenth deadline, we have received five submissions for the site. And and so that's what I'd like to mainly do tonight is just review at a high level those five. And then, of course, uh, uh, get some direction from you all on, based on some options on moving forward. Uh, one proposal summarized in this memorandum is A of Canta and I B F Hospitality. And uh, if you look at the five, just before I get into each of these. They can be broken apart, really, in a sense. Two of them were for uh, and uh, the entire site for a hotel project. Two of them were actually a mix of hotel and residential. And one was for office. So the first two, A of Canta and I B F. And then Majestic Hospitality partnered with Equinox were for hotel deals. There were two hundred rooms in the A of Canta proposal, a reference to one point five million dollar land value. And about a hundred million dollar project cost. Uh, what is important, of course, is evidence of financial wherewithal at this stage in the game, so we understand. Uh, which of the parties can perform, if you will. We're not at that point to make any decisions, but. It is important, I think, in the high level assessment of these responses, uh, what the evidence of financial wherewithal. Ended up looking like. And so in this case, there was a letter from J P Morgan. Uh, related to the uh, Bai family, B H A I family. That has over six, a sixty million dollar balance on hand. So the partnership between A of Canta and I B F Hosp. A Bai is the first proposal for two hundred, uh, two hundred room hotel. The second was uh, a partnership between Majestic Hospitality and Equinox. Two hundred room hotel. There was, there was not really a specific evidence of financial wherewithal provided. Uh, there was an architect, obviously, within that um, within that proposal and some descriptions of the project, but again, at a very, very high level. The third proposal, and this is in no particular order, but the third proposal is where we get into a mix of residential and hotel. So uh, Jam McClellan Development submitted a proposal for. Two hundred and thirty residential slash hotel units, thirty thousand square foot conference room, thirty thousand square foot athletic club. Uh, the partner identified within this proposal was Bridge Housing as a potential residential development partner. And then there were actually some terms, uh, interestingly enough, specifically as to those economics. Like a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar deposit. Uh, offered for a ten month due diligence period with a ninety day extension for fifty thousand dollars. At which time the deposit would become non fundable. Th- this was a little more detailed than we were necessarily uh either expecting or had asked for. But it was provided the form of a letter. And then there was an indication that not, the nonprofit Bridge Housing and G S R Financial. Uh, has reached out to other financial institutions and investors regarding the site, the project costs. Was anticipated to range from a hundred to a hundred and thirty-eight million dollars. So there are some references in these proposals to pretty significant project cost. Which really then, to me, puts a a further burden on the need for financial wherewithal. The fourth proposal is by L F George Properties Corp. And it's again, a mix of hotel and residential. In this case, there was actually a concept plan. That separated the hotel build. Unit hotel building and a two hundred unit residential dwelling unit building, and those were actually separate. Uh, there's a letter of interest that states the purchase price to be three million dollars. Again, more detail than we had necessarily asked for. But there was an indication of an escrow that would close in thirty days. What was interesting about this proposal is there was evidence of financial wherewithal. In the form of a uh First American Exchange Company Statement of Account. Which was as of Au- August thirtieth with a two point three million dollar balance. And then this site identified as a replacement property. So I think it's safe to say that this was sort of a ten thirty-one exchange. And a hundred and eighty day deadline to close on that ten thirty-one exchange was January twelfth of twenty twenty-two. So again, some, some specifics uh in the fourth proposal. The fifth proposal. Uh, neither had residential L contemplated in it. It was from a company called Phase Three Real Estate Partners. And it suggested a research and development office concept, including approximately two hundred and ten thousand square feet of office. Uh, there could be some additional development if the city desired that. The submit also included a partner reference, which was Bain Capital Real Estate. As a development and financial partner that's invested four point three billion dollars of equity. In over four hundred uh projects across multiple sectors since two thousand and ten. So there wasn't specific financial wherewithal, but there was a a partner referenced in here that has. That it's very, very well capitalized, which was Bain Capital. Another interesting point is that while this project does not generate uh T O T, transient occupancy tax. There was a reference to the fact that the developer could potentially provide the same level of taxation. Project uh in the form of sort of a creative or structured. Uh, partnership that had comparable long-term revenue for the city. That's a summary of the five. We identified potential next steps as the following. Number one. If you wanted to get a presentation from all five or a shortlist of these five, you could certainly do that. And we could call that process an interview process. So that's one choice. Um, that we would, we laid out for you all, and that would probably be in an open session city council meeting. Where we would try to gear the presentations toward a very specific set of. Uh, facts, you know, tell us your project program, project description. Tell us about how you would finance a project like this. Do you have the capabilities? Because we're talking about hu- a hundred million plus dollars of project cost, so that will become very important. Is there a public subsidy you would be? We could guide the presentations of the developers if you were just to choose to do that. And again, call that, you know, an interview process. Based on the outcome of those developer presentations. And those interviews, you could choose one party, if that's what it boiled down to, and maybe enter into an exclusive negotiating agreement. So that we would envision interviews with these developers sometime in January of twenty twenty-two. Another option would be that because you've got. A far greater blend of land uses, you know, previously they were, these were all hotel. Uh, contemplated projects. You now have hotel, you have residential, you have office. If you cared to, you could even extend a deadline and try to open up this R F Q. P to a broader group where we would redistribute. Uh, the R F P, R F Q P to a list of developers that included. Ones with residential or office experience. So that was another option. Uh, the city, of course, could choose a a different course of action at your pleasure. And uh, I think at that point, at this point, I'd like to stop. That's sort of the summary of where we're at. I think maybe the. Most productive uh way to to address. It, this is to maybe with a series of questions. So we're available for questions and comments and uh certainly direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hira, on your presentation um and summary on um the applications that we received. I think, I think one of the main questions, and I think you alluded to some of it, is. You know, I think we need to. Ensure that the applicants that we choose have that financial. Uh, capacity or can prove that they are, they have the ability to move through um their, their projects, right? Um, this. I mean, we've gotten out um several times now on this site. And I was just a freshman council member when there was, you know. Oh, this came, this was brought about. And so I think something very important is to see. Really, who has the capacity and the financial backing? Um, so that we're not in this situation again. Understood that we went through a pandemic, understood, but I think, you know, we were, I mean, it was prior to the pandemic. So. If we can get the information, I know you said maybe if we do some sort of opportunity to have people present. I mean, I'm open to that. Um, but I also want to uh make sure. Uh, that's a huge piece of it in my, in my eye. I that, you know, there is that wherewithal um kind of. Uh, that's, that's a big piece for me right now, given the fact that we've had to go through. Releasing the R F P, R F Q again. So, thank you. Uh, any, okay, councilmember Sylvester.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. It's my understanding that the um, the R F P has already been extended. And uh. I just wanted to, uh, as the mayor provided information, we have been through this for a long time. And we really need to get moving. I really feel that too many hands in the pot spoils the soup, as they say. So I'm against extending the R F P to take in additional um. Potential uh developers. Uh. There's also a term called no guts, no glory. We wanted a hotel there. And to see two applicants came up with a combination of hotel and residence. I think that's unique and they kind of stepped out of the box. And uh, you you know, given uh how our priority is in Daly City, especially. In the area of residences as well. So I, I, I think that was good. So I think moving forward as we did before, we need to see something. Like maybe possible renditions as to what it would look like. And um, there was one other aspect I wanted to add. We did this before, we saw renditions and then we can go from there. I, I do know that I require a zoning change if we do a combination, but. We can deal with that when that time comes, if we decide to go that way. But um, I think it's very important that we continue to move. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Dijivani.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hira. I'm gonna sit, I'll have a couple of comments to make after probably public comment. But I just want to ask a quick question. When you mentioned the commercial, um, are these people interested in anything having to do with biotech?
Uh, as to, yeah, as to the developer Phase Three Real Estate Partners. I think their business is geared toward life sciences, so I think the answer to your question is yes. And the way I understand life sciences to work. Is that there are um. Three core markets in our country, uh, Boston, San Diego, and the San Francisco area. So that's part of the reason why the interest is there for this bio. And life sciences, science use and uses. In in the Daly City area.
Okay, and then, and you've seen that pretty viable, like in, in your opinion, or?
We're seeing more and more of it. Uh, you know, what's interesting, of course, is uh, one, in one sense, where were the life science folks? You know, two, three, four, five years ago.
Right.
So I thi- I think it's a um burgeoning, uh, not burgeoning, but I think it's strengthening in, in the demand. For that, that type of use. And I think it does have a lot to do with sort of a, a broader theme of health and wellness. That is a big part of what's happening in our country.
Yeah, and I, and for me, uh, looking at our surrounding cities, like South San Francisco, for instance. Um, they've been able to be successful in that as well. And I don't think we should close the door on options. And that you, that we have an option as well on um that end, because that's something we definitely do not have in Daly City. And uh, I mean, although the other options seem to be, are very interesting as well, but just even having that one on the table. Um, I'd be interested in in, in uh seeing all of them as well present. Because I think we need to be open minded because of, um, I'm glad you brought it to our table. Appreciate your outreach and everything you did. Uh, because um, things have changed. I think you presented that before. And if our surrounding cities are that successful, then we need to think about what we need to tap into as well. So um, I appreciate that and I'll probably have another comment after public uh comment uh through the Madam Mayor. Uh, but thank you very much and thank you for answering the questions and great presentation and great work. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from my colleagues?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Venod Tura.
Um, so thank you, Ken, for uh your presentation. Um. So. Let me start by saying that um. I, I think that we should probably give everybody a chance um at an interview. So. Um, the five that you've identified, I think it would be a good idea to. Have them all formally present at a council meeting so we can, you know, really ask some questions, see what the presentation is like. And and give it a good go. Um, I will tell you now that I am, uh, if I had to narrow down the list based on what you presented. Uh, I have my reservations about the uh Canta Group. I know that they have partnered with um. Someone else, but um, the track record is uh causing me to have some concern. Um, that they can really move forward financially, um, even with the partnership that appears to be. Uh, have developed. I am not that interested in a business uh office uh building type at that location. Uh, because for me, the bottom line is. Um, what is the most uh, or what is, how can we generate more revenue? For the city. And um, so I'm, I'm really interested in the numbers. As to how much revenue really every single developer is going to bring to the table. And I would like a, a, an answer as to what those numbers look like with each development that is going to be proposed. Um, and then the third thing I want to say is that, again, because I, I, I do believe in giving people a chance. And um, uh, letting them present their case. Um, I am actually also interested in the other idea that you proposed, which is um, seeing if there are other. Uh, potential developers who would be interested as well and not to delay. Our process of deciding perhaps interviews in January, but maybe from now until then. That R F P for additional uh proposals could come in to where we could also schedule. The, the additional batch, if you will, of um. Uh, developers uh in, in, in the same month. So. Um, that way we get the full benefit of listening to whatever is out there. I obviously think that the reason why you proposed perhaps extending it to other developers is. There, there's probably a market of them now and, and maybe there's um. that we should seek them out to see which is truly the best for us. And that will, I think, be a good idea to have a full complement of people who are willing to develop there. But again, the bottom line for me is I need to make sure they are financially sound, that they can, you know, that the idea of a deposit appeals to me. That really shows they're bona fides in terms of their being able to back it up. But then I think more importantly also is how much money are they going to be able to generate for Daly City? So that's my direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? See, seeing no comment, other comments or questions. I know this is for information only, but maybe we can gather some next steps. And, and understand kind of where, where, where our direction will lead staff and also Mr. Hira and kind of. So what I hear from my colleagues is that actually, there, there are two things. Continue to reach out to potential other opportunities, but also move forward with the ones that we have. And then another of my colleagues is okay with kind of fine tuning it to a couple. And then I hear that also the opportunity to hear from all applicants is important. And so, I mean, I, I think it is given if we had twenty, I think that maybe we would whittle it down. I mean, we have five. I think it's, it's doable for us to kind of hear from all five of them. In this regard, it would probably be a study session. And we would just, it'd be a standalone meeting, as mentioned earlier. Now, the other question I have is how do people feel in regards to releasing another RFP? And, and, and seeing if there is more opportunity? I mean, this is all, one of the last pieces of land that we have in regards to development, right? We've already kind of moved forward with the Cow Palace site for housing. And so how do people feel about that kind of like simultaneous process? Okay, councilmember Sylvester?
Thank you. I, I, I'm trying to put myself in the place of developers as well. Those who are fin- financially capable, they can probably wait. And I'm concerned that they have investors who also wants to get moving. But I'm not a developer. And so I believe in fairness. I believe in giving everyone the opportunity. It was already extended once. But now it may be called upon, but wait a minute. The RFP said hotel. And here you have something other than a hotel. So if you want to put it out there, and that is our job, we offer everyone the same opportunity. And if we have to go through any extras, then I'm for it. So I'll be willing to move in that direction as well. Just to ensure fairness to everyone and transparency. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councilmember Sylvester. Councilmember Dijavani.
Yes, Madam Mayor, it all makes sense. I think we're pretty much on the same page. This is our last, as you said, the last one that we have, and we need to make sure that it has the most economic benefit ongoing for our city. And make sure we do our due diligence and moving forward. And I agree, if that's what it takes, then I also support that.
Okay, thank you, councilmember Dijavani.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Dovsmogbol, do you have any?
I think I concur with the rest of my colleagues in terms of, you know, just doing our due diligence. Again, this is like our last, our last essential piece of the land, and we wanted to make the best out of it. So I think, you know, just doing a due diligence and what is can be the most economic viable decision for our city.
Okay, thank you very much. I think it is pretty much unanimous in kind of the direction I hear is are willing to see if there's any more opportunities out there, but also provide an interview for all of those that have submitted. And so it's a two-pronged approach that councilmember Vina Ventura provided earlier in the discussion. And so I think that's, that's where I hear the direction. And I think that's our next steps. So thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Hira, do you have any questions for us?
I know. I appreciate the input and feedback. And we'll work with staff as we have pretty, pretty diligently ourselves. And it's been great in, in doing so to try to make arrangements for interviews, let's just say, after the first of the year. And in the meantime, be open, open minded to the other opportunities that may present themselves to the city.
Great, thank you. And, and so you will be working with our staff to kind of release another RFQ?
And what we could do is, what we did before, when we opened it up till October fifteenth is we could, perhaps we could say till the end of the year, something to that effect, we could okay, that the process is still open. And maybe even, you know, put that on your website, maybe even indicate that the city would be open to different or multiple uses or a blend of uses inclusive of, you know, hospitality, residential office, sort of on, on a more open fashion per se. Because we had really been kind of referring to it before, I guess, as the, as a hotel site. And knowing though that there would need to be a zone change. So I think that's important, you know, for, for folks to understand. They would have to go through a process. But that the city would be open to it at this stage in the game. So I could picture that going through the end of the year, December thirty first. And then, but us picking up study session date and making sure that all five parties so far would be able to make that study session and, and make a presentation.
Sounds like a plan.
Okay. Great, we'll get there. We'll get there.
We have hope, we'll get there.
Yeah, I agree. Well, it's a very, it's a very good property and it's in a very good location. So I do think, you know, maybe the virtue of patience is, will, will ultimately pay off.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you so much.
Mayor, I think you have a public comment.
Oh, thank you very much. We have public comment, Ms. Ilani Ramos.
For those members of the public who wish to provide general hot comment on item number thirteen, please use the raise hand feature. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. We have one hand raised. When you hear a name called, you will receive a request to unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking. You will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak. When you reach your two minutes, please wrap up your comments. Cynthia?
Hello, my name is Cynthia Gomez from United Here Local Two. I, hopefully I'm coming through and everyone can hear me, okay?
We can hear you.
Thank you. This is, every, every city has slightly different procedures for speaking a public comment. So as I mentioned, my name is Cynthia Gomez. I'm the research analyst for United Here Local Two. We represent hotel workers. And I've had a chance to speak to some of the members of this council. As, as you've mentioned, this has been kind of a long time in the running, the discussion over this particular parcel. And there are others that I haven't yet had an opportunity to speak to, but very much hope to. Many of our members who work in San Francisco or who work in San Mateo County, many live in Daly City. And so we've had a chance to speak to some of them about their concerns. Generally speaking, as you figure out what to do about this parcel, I want to talk about the question of whether the jobs that would come would be the kind that would lift up the community by providing a path for workers to have a voice on the job and a path for workers to organize a union if they choose to. Those are the kinds of jobs that can lift up a community. Jobs that come without those enforceable kinds of commitments can really drag down a community. So I really want that, it's very good that there's a lot of time in this process and that the council is taking a leadership role and being very specific on what they ask for. So what we're asking for is that when the decision comes about whom to sell the land to, what's the best use for it, that the question of workers and the enforceable commitments that the developer is prepared to make and to sign really stay forefront, at the forefront in your deliberations. As I said, I haven't had a chance to speak to all of you yet. I very much hope to, I'll be reaching out to each of you individually to kind of talk through all of this. I know it's been some time since we've talked before. So I very much hope to hear from all of you and to continue to raise this question. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. There are no additional hands raised.
Thank you. Thank you so much for those who spoke on this item. And appreciate your time this evening. And so with that, I think we will now move on to public appearances and oral communications in general.
In accordance with the Brown Act laws governing regular meetings, the city council is not authorized to speak to or take an action on any other items in this meeting. Members of the public who wish to comment may click the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. It is important to note that staff will announce the name of the last person whose hand was raised upon calling for public comment. And that person will be the last verbal comment. If additional speakers queue up after the last called speaker, the mayor may continue to allow public comment if time allows. Otherwise, public comment may be emailed to cityclerk@dailycity.org to be added to the record and shared with the city council. When you hear your name called, staff will send you a request to unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When your two minutes have been reached, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Speakers not in compliance will be muted. We have one hand raised. This is a phone in caller.
Hi, community members, any members out there from the US Congress? Great to have you join in, listening in. So do you want to follow up? Community, obviously, community service is not Daly City officials' strong point. So I know we've sent a number of emails with regards to different issues and really yet to receive any responses. But one thing I do want to point out and really not to ignore the governor's laws that he signed in and even laws that went into effect in September, September thirtieth, on or around September thirtieth to be exact. So do you want to find out where city, Daly City officials are with SB two, SB sixteen, AB twenty-six, AB forty-eight, AB eighty-nine, AB four-eight-one, AB four-nine-zero, and AB nine-five-eight? These are actually the police reform laws. So these really, in my opinion, would put individuals that are maybe corrupt or tyrants, would put them in line. So I think that's really building the trust of the community of, from the police department. So I think the community needs to be educated on that as to where we are, as well as the body cams. I think body cams are good, from what I understand from previous meetings. They are in force, they are in effect, and understanding how they're activated too. So upon command or directive from the community, they would then be active. So very, very important because I'm sure that the community members are at this wind time ready to take their cell phones out and record any interactions with law enforcement at this wind time as well. So I want to make sure that we understand as the community and educated and perhaps as an idea, maybe put it on the, on the city website as to what your rights are in the constitution, where the AB, where the police reform laws are. And as well as, you know, obviously the body cams, we need updates on those. And, you know, we're not going to keep diving into the death of Mr. Howland because obviously that should be settled, unfortunately, monetary value and a man's life, but that's another thing. So so we do want to make sure that you address those. I mean, that is the governor's laws, so he signed off on those. So make sure that we do address those.
Thank you for your comments. That concludes public comment. Thank you so much, Ms. Ramos. And now we are moving on to any appointments on boards and commissions or membership committee appointments. Councilmember Dijavani. You, you are, you're on mute, Councilmember Dijavani.
Let's see if it works. Thank you so much. Thank you. Appreciate that. Yeah, it's my pleasure to introduce and to, to appoint Saul Miranda. Saul Miranda grew up in the Bay Shore, has been, I'd like to appoint him to the Recreation Commission after our friend, Mr. Pastor, has retired. So there's an opening at this time. And not only is he from Miranda, is from our Bay Shore community. He has been a big youth leader, not just in the Latino community, but in others. He is currently the direct representative, district representative for Senator Josh Becker currently. And who is really excited to have him as well. So we are blessed to have him in our community. And he has, again, been a benefactor of our recreation growing up. So he is well, willing to give back and serve as a Recreation Commission. So with that, I'd like to appoint Saul Miranda. And he has filled out a form online as well.
Thank you, councilmember Dijavani.
Sorry, I stepped away for a moment. Was that a motion on the floor?
I, I, I don't know if that was a motion. Was that a motion, councilmember Dijavani?
Yeah, yes, please, for, um, yes. He's a district representative for Senator Josh Becker.
I will second the motion.
Okay.
Glenn Sylvester seconds.
Okay, we have a second. So is this a roll call vote or?
This is just a voice vote, some motion.
I'm going to vote no, so I'd ask for a roll call vote.
A roll call vote.
Mr. Buenaventura?
No.
Dr. Rod?
Yes.
Ms. Dijavani?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvester?
Glenn Sylvester, yes.
Ms. Manalo?
No. Motion passes three-two. Okay, moving on to item number.
Okay, moving on to item number fourteen, council committees. Uh, council, any council committees reports at this time? Seeing Vice Mayor Dallas Muggwall.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one council committee update from Peninsula Clean Energy. We as a, as, as a group, we approved the resolution to purchase renewable energy, both in wind and in solar. And we're trying to, you know, you know, we, we talked about in, in this agenda about reducing our greenhouse gases. So, you know, we're taking steps towards that, to that goal. And also, we finalized our diversity, equity, accessibility, and inclusion subcommittee, I mean, vendor. And we had, we had eight proposals, seven, seven of them completed. So we, as a committee, went with G cap services and they'll be reviewing all the DAI processes in terms of everything that PCE does. So we can have like the equity and representation when it comes to clean energy. And it's probably something that, you know, I would like to see us as a city as well, look at how we do DAI processes in Daly City as well. Given the fact of what has been going on in our council meetings and the improper uses of implicit bias and understanding what race and racism is. And I think we need to be conscious of that, especially after the movements and continued movements for black lives and, you know, we honored, you know, United Against Hate, and we also honored notions of, you know, Native American History Month. And I think if we stand by those principles, it's something that we should be considering as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vice Mayor Rod. On that, I see no other hands raised at this time in regards to city council reports. Our council committee reports, our council member Sylvester on council committee reports.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this might be the appropriate time just to provide a request, an update for the public on the police body cams. I thought we were looking to get a report. And hopefully that report will be coming soon. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. I think the, the report is forthcoming, but I think hopefully by the next meeting, but I am in agreement in that respect, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for, for saying that. Yes, it will be at the next meeting. I think at the second meeting that we had, the carryover on that Wednesday, staff announced that it would be the second meeting in November, November 22nd. PD is ready and happy to provide that report.
Thank you. On city council reports, I had the opportunity to celebrate the 60th anniversary of the Philippine Nurses Association of Northern California. Now Filipino nurses have been within the fabric of this nation for many decades. They've been in the forefront before, during, and after this pandemic. And so it was just wonderful to see over decades of their leadership, their organization, giving back to the community and continuing to provide professional services of learning for, for their group as well. And then also was able to join the Fourth Annual Adobo Cook Off at Seven Mile House, which was really wonderful to see. And what that is, is all the proceeds of that go to a nonprofit that Seven Mile House participates with and joins. And so it's, it's really a community event and amazing to taste all the different types of adobo. The People's Choice was actually a young gentleman that grew up in Daly City. He's Samoan, but it's very funny. He mentioned that he thought adobo was Samoan because he was growing up and it was being cooked until he realized someone told him like, no, that adobo is Filipino. But he did create a dish where it was the People's Critics Award. And so he was raised in Daly City. I knew he was very happy with that. Also, I'm happy to be a judge for the Employee Halloween Contest with some of my colleagues for the employees. That was always great to see the camaraderie amongst the employee departments is always wonderful to see. And always a fun time of the year. Also was able to, along with the mayor of Colma, judge the changer, the Chamber of Commerce online. You know, everyone's still trying to be safe nowadays. So it was an online photo contest. And over the past weekend, I also was able to join the Burmese community in Daly City for the Save Myanmar Multi-Ethnic Cultural Show at Cermoni Del Rey. And that was just a night filled with seeing all the different ethnicities within Myanmar, just showcasing their dances and the tributes to their regions, but also seeing young people really engaged and pushing for freedom and liberty. And that was something truly inspiring to see on that end as well. And so that's what I have for city council report. I see Councilmember D. Giovanni.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to just mention, speaking of Halloween, I think that we had a late meeting last time. I'm not sure we reported on that our Daly City PD won first place at the trunk or treat. I attended there. It was really great, great new Westmore students were, did trunk or treat. Our Daly City Student Advisory did trick or treat. And there were family, there's a family named Tiffer, if you're out there. They actually won second place in our trick or treat. And I remember that the other ones were giving out the prizes. So thank you to David, Denise. I mean, everybody, Eduardo, I mean Romeo. It was great. It was well attended as usual with a drive-through. Of course, everybody's looking forward to hopefully an end placement, but it was very well attended. They came up with some creative things to our wastewater. I know they usually win every year, but they were there representing even our North County Fire. The ladies in the office showed up, even though our firefighters couldn't be there this year because they're, you know, they were on calls, but a lot of people participated. Also, I'd like to say that we attended also the Daly City PLA, Public Libraries Association, held their used books the last two weekends, very successful to Victoria, Rosie Tejada for sponsoring. I think Tom Nurse sponsored, Adrian Tessier sponsored, Teresa Barano. Susan Brisbane Smith was a sponsor and to the volunteers, Phyllis Rizzi, Westmore students, Oceana students, Jefferson students, our librarian Shayla Green, Ms. Green. It was so many people that participated and Patricia De Vera as well that gave their time. Clayton Koo, he also volunteered. And I know there's so many more. But I'm looking forward to the total. They worked very hard dividing the books up and it was fantastic. And a lot of hard work, but Daly City pulls through again. So that's the report I'd like to make out for this evening. If I left anything out, I'll do it the next time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Giovanni. You definitely reminded me that I took my little Cookie Monster that Saturday, Ethan, to buy some books at their book sale at Westlake. And so it was definitely a buzz over there, which was a good thing. I, I, when we headed over there, there was actually a lot of folks purchasing books. And I know that we definitely grabbed some children books that we purchased. And then also there was just one book that Tony Robles wrote about the I Hotel. And so that was over there. I'm going to get that for Ethan as well. But amazing work to, I saw Ms. Phyllis Rizzi there and as well as of course the whole team. And so that was wonderful to see with all the youth volunteers. But I'm so glad that we're able to do that and be in person so that there's an opportunity for people to support PCPLA. So thank you for that. I'm also wanted to share that was able to join over the weekend, the CalNet, the Sixth Annual CalNet Leadership Retreat. And so that was something with all of the electeds, API electeds up and down California. So that was something that I was able to attend recently as well. So there were, we had congressional, state, county boards and commissions, city council members up and down California to can be, so. I think that's it on my part. Yeah. So anyone else from my colleagues? Councilmember D. Giovanni?
Yeah, just one more quick thing is, as we know, the, but because we won't be meeting again until a couple of weeks, that I know that all of us, I'm sure, stand together for our veterans on Veterans Day. And we know that we're having a local event here in Daly City. I usually go to San Bruno Community Center, to the cemetery. But because, because so proudly, we're having our own here in Daly City as well. And I wanted to add thank you to, as well, to Leilani for, as well. I think Dr. Rod was a a judge and the mayor for the city employees. So congratulations to the great costumes and our wastewater and water and our HR and, and Diane McCarthy did a great Frida Kahlo. It was fantastic. And so all those that participated as well. So thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember D. Giovanni. I see no other hands raised at this time for city council reports. Seeing none, I will now ask Ms. Moppy if, if there are any reports.
Oh, no, thank you, Madam Mayor. Not tonight. Thank you, though.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm now up. Look at that, nine twenty-eight. So thank you all, to staff and my colleagues. At this point of our meeting, I will now hand it over to Councilmember Buenaventura. We will now move towards our in memoriam of those that have passed.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. I'd like us to adjourn in memory of Sofia Melendez. Sofia Melendez is the older sister of Alex, Alexander Melendez. Alex has been a really strong community advocate for housing at the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. He's actually been to our council meetings and is a friend to many of us. And sadly, his older sister passed away about three weeks ago. She is survived by her son and nephew. The, they've set up a GoFundMe page that will be used to take care of the expenses, including her, the future of her son's educational expenses. That GoFundMe, according to his page, expires tonight at midnight. So we want to just wish Alex Melendez our deepest heartfelt condolences to the loss of your sister. And then I'd also like us to adjourn in memory of Supervisor Wilma Chan of Alameda County, who tragically was killed while she was walking her dog, I believe, at an intersection in her city, in her city of Alameda. So we send her condolences to her family. She was a tremendous leader in the community, having represented, been supervisor twice already, on two different terms. And then I think she was an assemblywoman in between. But she served with great distinction. She was considered a very strong leader in the API community and very well recognized. And so I'd like to adjourn in memory of her. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Buenaventura. And in this moment, we all have a moment of silence.